Next year's is okay.
Okay, here we are. We're gonna open a board session. It's Wednesday, February 24th, 9:00 AM here at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street, Northeast Salem. Join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that's great. I've got to say the Pledge of Allegiance twice already today, so I'm doubly patriotic and enthusiastic. We have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning, so we'll move right into the consent agenda, and I believe, Commissioner, it's your turn, right?
Mr. Chair, I will move today's consent agenda. There's just three items. Under Board of Commissioners, OLCC application recommended for approval for TA operating LLC DBA Portland Travel Center in Aurora, Oregon. Under Public Works, approve an order to schedule a public hearing for March 23rd, 2016, for a mass gathering, 16-002 Supergame, and receive hearings officer's decision denying administrative review, 15-033 Byle, Clerk's File Number 5708.
Okay.
I'll second the motion. I had to look up what a Supergame is. It's paintball, just so you know. Could be fun. Like to see you there, Commissioner Cameron.
That's great. I will take on your challenge. Just let me know when it is. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar this morning. Any further discussion, other than paintball? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we're moving right into action. Our first up today is Community Services. Tamara is here with us this morning to consider approval of Marion County Children and Families Bylaws Revision. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. As stated, I am Tamara Ketch. I'm the Director of Community Services, and we oversee the Children and Families Commission in our department. The bylaw revisions before you are for consideration of approval. They have been reviewed by the Children and Families Commission members a few months back and are bringing forward to you for consideration with their knowledge and approval. The Children and Families Commission has been in existence since 1989 in Marion County. However, for most of its tenure here, we have been under a statute that was devised out of a state system that was statewide. Every county had a Children and Families Commission. In 2013, that system sunsetted. However, Marion County and the Commission members have had conversations about its importance and value in contributing leadership and looking at ways that children and families in Marion County should be served, can be served, and looking at systems that serve those individuals who are in need of services. Over the last year, we have changed our goal where we were very broad, zero to 18, and their families. The Commission has really narrowed its focus and really is targeting youth ages 11 to 18 and the families through various supports. They have some sub-goals of looking at strengthening families, enhancing neighborhoods, and promoting student success as well as workforce readiness. This year, we've been putting a lot of focus on the, what we're calling, the Youth Resources Action Team, looking at how we can enhance services, whether it be through mental health or through connections, bringing organizations that serve youth and families through grant alliance, helping them to write grants and receive resources into our community, et cetera. The majority of the changes in the bylaws reflect the elimination of the requirements that the statute put on the Commission, and then we've also made some small changes in our infrastructure to reflect the current structure and how we're handling the Commission in our office. For example, we used to have an executive committee because we allocated money almost, you know, very routinely, and we needed to make decisions in between meetings of the Commission. Now, we are more of an advisory, not only to the county commissioners, but also to the community and community partners. So, we've formed a steering committee to help ensure that we stay true to our goals and our direction is sound for the next year. And I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Tamara?
No question, just a comment. First of all, I want to thank Tammy for bringing these forward. We spent a number of different meetings working on the language, and I think we came up with something that the Commission could support. It's probably not perfect at this point, but I think it's good enough for us to move forward. Under the goals, I just wanted to emphasize the point that we had a great deal of discussion about the focus of the Commission, and there was a meeting, I think last May, almost a year ago, where a motion was made to target youth ages 11 to 18. And then at the subsequent meeting, we added family support, and that family support is not only for families with youth 11 to 18. Families don't necessarily have children that segment into different age ranges. They go across the board. But we want to be mindful that the Early Learning Hub has kind of taken the statutes that we used to have and applied them to that early childhood area, and so we don't want to duplicate their effort or kind of get crosswise in terms of what our direction is and their direction is. We're here to understand what they're doing, support in any way, but there are areas that they may not be working on that work with families across the board, and our Family Preservation Action Team, that's been around for many years now, and Walt Beglau is actively involved with that, will continue to work on areas around foster care and some of the related issues around child abuse and neglect, in partnership with the Early Learning Hub, but with a sort of a broader focus on it than the hub might have. So, that was the comment I was gonna make.
Okay, good.
I don't have any other than Chair Cameron to make a motion that we do approve the Marion County Children and Families Commission bylaw revisions that are presented.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thanks, Tamara.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Finance. Consider approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 Second Supplemental Budget, and Rich is here for our pleasure this morning, and Jeff is with him, too. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, and I'm Rich Meinecker from Finance Department. To my right is Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer, and I'm here to talk about the Second Supplemental Budget for this fiscal year. Oregon revised statutes require that increases to appropriation authority from the original adopted budget must be adopted by the governing body. Public notice of this supplemental budget was published in the Statesman Journal newspaper in accordance with statutory requirements. The Second Supplemental Budget increases the total budget by $4,239,859. The revised budget is almost $396 million. Six funds have significant budget increases. I will review budget change highlights and state amounts to the nearest $1,000. Details of the supplemental budget were reviewed with the Board of Commissioners at Management Update on February 8th. The general fund total budget will not change, but there are several notable shifts of appropriation authority between expenditure categories. The Clerk's Office budget is reduced $67,000 as consolidation of two positions into one resulted in personnel services savings. The Sheriff's budget for personnel services has increased $595,000 to cover cost of living allowance and market adjustments for sheriff deputies resulting from collective bargaining agreements. Transfers out total $1,201,000 comprised of transfers to the Capital Improvement Projects Fund, $179,000. The Facilities Renovation Fund, $964,000. The Dog Control Fund, $55,000, and the Sheriff's Grant Fund, $3,000. Materials and Services has decreased $964,000, and Contingency has decreased 700, and I think I have the wrong figure there, $765,000, yes, that's right. The Capital Improvement Projects Fund will increase $201,000. Revenue includes $179,000 transfer from the General Fund and an $18,000 transfer from the Juvenile Grants Fund. All additional revenue is allocated among seven projects, the largest being a $137,000 for a vote tally system for Clerk's Office use. The Community Corrections Fund budget will increase $442,000 from additional state justice reinvestment funding. Personnel Services has increased $57,000 to cover a cost of living pay adjustment and conversion of one part-time deputy to full-time. Contingency is decreased to cover the bulk of the Personnel Services increase. The State Justice Reinvestment Funds are allocated to a number of contracted social and public safety services. The Dog Control Fund budget will increase $56,000, of which $55,000 is a general fund transfer to allocate to Personnel Services to add two Personnel Services positions for the last four months of fiscal year. $2,000 is for collection of add-debt revenue and is allocated to dog shelter, various materials. The Facility Renovation Fund budget will increase $964,000 as a result of the transfer from the General Fund. The entire amount is allocated to capital outlay and set aside for major renovation projects after construction plans and cost estimates are finalized. The Health Fund budget will increase $2287,000, mostly from new intergovernmental grants. Personnel Services increases slightly by $69,000. Materials and Services increases $255,000, which is allocated to numerous line items, notably $179,000 for pass-through to health providers and other contracted services. $1,963,000 is allocated to contingency while the department analyzes service needs. The Sheriff's Grant Fund budget will increase $234,000. Primary revenues increases state grants for the prison diversion program and state marine board contract. Personnel Services has increased $101,000 to cover shifting 1.5 FTE deputy sheriff positions from the inmate welfare fund to support prison diversion jail reentry programs and for previously discussed pay increases resulting from collective bargaining. The balance of available funds is allocated to contingency. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No.
Just one comment. First of all, thank you, Rich, for good work on this supplemental budget, and the reason that we don't have any questions is because we spent a management update meeting going through it in detail a couple weeks ago. Also, Rich graciously participated in a meeting where he learned a great deal about the Justice Reinvestment Initiative, and the language in the supplemental budget describes it perfectly, so I very much appreciate that. I guess the question that I have or the comment is that if you look at the resolution that's in the very back of the packet, I think a couple changes need to be made. It looks like it was probably picked up from a prior version of this resolution, so it says the first supplemental budget document was available for public inspection should be second. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then it says, and the board held the duly noticed public hearing on February 24th, but we're not having a public hearing today, as we discussed.
No, and those were both, oh wow, see, this is a version control. Those are both corrected in the packet up on the Internet and Intronet that has that in it. I just looked at it yesterday before 5:00 o'clock. It's the correct language.
The one we're looking at here.
I know, I'm just saying, wow. We send these out, and then we find and make corrections and put them up in the Internet and...
So, is it on, under the, did you send it to Christie?
Yeah.
Christie's looking puzzled. She doesn't remember that.
Well, we'll make sure we get that.
Okay, we just want to make sure that the one that we signed doesn't have those two.
Yeah, I can send you the corrected. I know it's, I've got a corrected version. It just was attached to that, and the corrected version didn't get, that didn't get deleted from your packet and substituted with a new.
All right, well, our packet's the one on the Internet, so.
Yeah.
Well, we gave a new, we gave a new packet yesterday to correct that page.
All right.
We'll make sure when we sign it.
Yeah, Christie will find it. She'll make sure we sign the right one. So, I just wanted to make sure.
Check that. So, just, and for the record, we're not having a public hearing because it is, the adjustment is less than 10%, correct? Okay.
Right.
So, we've got the correct information on the Internet. We'll make sure that that's the information that we're approving. Thank you.
Right, yeah, this one's the old version, too, so we'll have to swap that out and sign it later. Okay, so if there's no further questions, you want to motion?
I'm good. Well, our budget officer's here. John, do you have any comments before we make a motion and close this? That's amazing, great.
We're trying to make it worth your while to come down here, John. You have an opportunity to say something.
Okay.
All right, then, I would move approval of the fiscal year 2015-16 Second Supplemental Budget as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's done.
Mr. Chair.
There you go.
Oh, I knew we wouldn't get away with it.
You know, Rich said it all, and I just want to thank Rich for the work he does on this. He does a great job.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that completes our work. We'll go ahead and read the calendar coming up. So, after this board session, we have at 1:30 today, Capitol Community Television taping at the CCT Office, 575 Trade Street, Southeast. It's here in Salem. At 3:00, Job Council Meeting, location is at the Insight Boardroom, 626 High Street, Northeast, Suite 305. 4:00, Service District Meeting back here in this building in the Silverton Conference Room for the Chemechada Marion County 4-H Partnership on the fifth floor. Tomorrow, Thursday, February 25th, 7:30 to 9:30, the SEDCOR Ag Breakfast in the Fest Hall Room, 500 Wilco Highway, Northeast, Mount Angel. Is that the same room where you had the event last weekend that you went to?
Yeah.
Okay, I know where that is. All right, and then on February 25th, again tomorrow, 3:00 to 4:00, One-on-One Department Head-Elected Official Meeting with Justice of the Peace, Honorable Jan Zernoff, here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. And then we skip forward to Monday, the 29th. We have Calendar, Board of Commissioners Calendar Review on the fifth floor in the Silverton Conference Room at 8:30. Monday, the 29th, Management Update at 9:00, again in the Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. And then Wednesday, the 2nd of March, wow, March already, 9:00 AM, Board Session right back here in this room, Wednesday, the 2nd. At noon, we have our Woodburn County Meeting at Luis's Taqueria in Woodburn, and on Wednesday, from 2:30 to 4:30, Governor's Reentry Council Meeting at the Department of Public Safety and Standards Training, Hall of Heroes, 4190 Omsville, Salem. Omsville Highway in Salem.
And Mr. Chair, would you just note on the Woodburn Lunch, I think at Calendars this week, we swapped, and, well, it's great to notice it because Commissioner Brentana will be there. I think there will be two of us that will actually be going to State of the City over at Mission Mill.
Yeah, I haven't decided. I got to hear the mayor this morning, so.
All right, so you might, so you're keeping both of them on your calendar?
I love that food up there. There's something, there's something, you know, about that food they serve, so, yeah. They're both on my calendar, so I'll figure that out.
So, if we both show up there, we'll make sure it's.
Oh, the State of the City?
Yeah.
Oh, we may want to notice that?
Just notice them both, and you can go either way.
State of the City, which is at the Conference Center.
I think it's at Mission Mill. That's what I wrote down.
Well, we'll get it properly noticed up on the calendar, so it'll be there before then, in case anybody wants to make sure there's no, never mind, I'm not gonna make that comment. Okay, anything you want to chat about that's happened this week or that's not happening? Sometimes that's what we like to talk about as well.
Well, we had a very good SWAMAC meeting last night, Solid Waste Management Advisory Council, so I don't get fined for an acronym. And this is a really great group of people that represent all of the obvious players, GART and Services and Republic, the Hallers Association, COVANTA, but then we also have people that represent public health and business and the Chamber of Commerce, United Way, so a lot of other organizations. So, we had a presentation from Portland General Electric last night, PGE. We'd been waiting for this for two months. They were supposed to come, I think, in December and had to cancel, and then January, they ended up being involved in a bill that's right now going through the legislature.
It blew up yesterday.
Yeah, kind of a big deal, and so.
That may be fine, by the way.
So, last night, they were with us and talked, it was very interesting, because Darby Randleve, I think it's his last name, from COVANTA, brought up the same thing that I recall, that when we were working on our contract with COVANTA, they had this little line graph, and it showed how electrical revenues were going down, but it was kind of just for a few years, and then they were gonna work their way back up. And he described the dynamics of how they price electricity these days, and it is, I mean, it's gone from, Darby talked about that they used to tell them how much they would have every quarter and kind of, you know, like, kind of right-size it at the end of the quarter. Now, it's by the hour, and what they're talking about now is in 15-minute increments, that they have to have it so flexible, primarily because the renewables are so volatile that they have to be able to put something in, and then they have, of course, peak loads and other times, but those are changing with, he talked about people from other places moving into Oregon and using air conditioning more in the summer, where, you know, I mean, I'm a, I was born and raised in Oregon. We turn on the air conditioning on the, you know.
Hundred-degree air.
Oh, yeah, on the few hot days, but otherwise, you know, it's just nice enough here that we don't need it in the summer, but some people run it all the time, and it's just kind of changing the way that electricity happens. It was a very interesting presentation, so what I said was, well, the headline is, it's not the way that it used to be, and it never will be, and he said, yeah, pretty much, that's.
But that makes it hard to plan or contract.
Yeah. Shorter contracts, right.
How could you count on anything under those terms?
Right. So, that wasn't real great news from the waste-to-energy facility side of things, although it looks like they're gonna be negotiating a new contract with PGE within the next year or two, they said. Talked a bit about Metro. The interesting thing there was that the subcommittee that Matt Marler is working on from COVANTA is around them developing code, and we have a solid waste ordinance, right? They don't have anything that deals with what they call conversion technologies, which would be waste-to-energy, and there's also one where they turn plastics into oil, and so.
No, there isn't. That's been.
Well, this is, what he said, those were the two that were put in that subcommittee, and so really, the argument came out of the fact that they need to revise their code to put things in that don't exist. So, that was kind of an interesting thing, too, because I hadn't thought about that aspect of it, because we would do probably the same thing if we were going to attempt some new type of technology. We'd have to change our.
There has been a plastics doil, and they're just suspending it right now, but it always took.
Takes too much energy.
Too much energy. It always took a big subsidy to make it work.
Yeah, they didn't speak like that was kind of the answer, but what they're doing is grouping those in the same subcommittee that they're working on.
Refuse-derived fuel. Did you hear that term last night? I love that one.
What was it?
Refuse-derived fuel. You process it somehow, turn it into pellet scrap, and then burn it that way, but it's just another step, another cost, and that's the severity of ours. Take it as it is.
But the big news is that we talked about the timeframe for the rate increase around tipping fees that we've been discussing as a board, and if you backtrack and say that implementation date would be October 1, and then you backtrack for what it's gonna take for them to go to all of the cities and the county and change those rates, the date that they want us to approve the rate would be late March. So, we're talking about six weeks from now. So, Jolene was there. All of a sudden, our whole public communications campaign is like really compressed into a short period of time, so she is working on that. I think she got the message on that. But what it means is that we probably will need to move the public hearing that we were gonna ask them to do to our level and have a public hearing, and we picked a couple dates where it might work. So, they'd have to have a meeting in between their next meeting, and what they want to do at their next meeting is actually make a recommendation to support or not. I mean, but it looked like they were leaning towards supporting what the proposal is.
Well, we can always move that date back, too.
Move the date back from.
October 1.
Yeah.
If you go back further according to, you know.
First of the year, even.
Dennis has that spreadsheet pulled up.
Right, but I think there's value in us doing it about that time, because when we did it in November, we got in trouble because people are kind of, you know, it's more, people are more aware in October of what's going on. I mean, we could do it a little bit later in October, but, and we could probably do it into April in terms of when we approve it, but they need to have certainty in terms of what the rate is to be able to do the cost of service analysis with that in there, and that takes some time, and then start bringing it to the cities over the summer so that they're prepared. And the other thing that was very interesting is they would prefer the CPI over the three-year, and so I asked them to actually come and explain that. They said that cities used to, they used to go every two or three years, but now the cities are preferring that they use the CPI, so they sent Dennis back to actually look at an every-year increase, and they said including a CPI on some of those larger ones, like the medical waste and the blue bin, which are kind of high-ticket items, and they were saying that if you did a CPI with that, it might reduce slightly the amount that you need in the rates to the average residential customer.
Things change. It's certainly not the way I'd go, but that's 20 years ago.
Well, yeah, that's right. That's what Brian May was the one that said, that's what we would prefer, so. And Todd?
I had one other thought, and I don't know if Darby brought it up, but this, is it 4036 power one? Well, it doesn't matter. I never got it right.
Yeah, right.
So, what did he, did he comment on the renewable aspect in relation to value of our energy?
They really downplayed that. They said it would be a little bit, but not that much.
Not that much.
Because the credits, I can't, I'm not the expert on that, but just, they just said the way that.
They don't have a great value.
The credits work, the value of them isn't as great as it might be.
I've always been the assumption.
Kind of tough to sell them in certain times.
But if power utilities have to have these, wouldn't you like to be able to get some?
That's the thing about our supply of power at the Burner.
Consistent, right.
Versus a windmill or a solar panel, you're getting it 24/7, 365.
And our record has been wonderful.
Right.
Over 30 years.
And it's renewable.
They didn't say it wouldn't be worth anything. They just said it would be, it would bring it up some, but they didn't talk about it being the salvation of the.
It'd be interesting to get the power company's side of that story, because I heard the President of PGE say it'd be worth more if it was renewable and long-term contract.
Right.
Those are the two things that they need, so we're not involved in this, and this is what I don't.
And we get the benefit, but we don't do the negotiating. That's how it is, and you're right.
That doesn't sound right to me.
No, it doesn't sound right, but that's how it is.
Because, well, don't get me started, because not only do we not get to negotiate, but we, if they do a poor negotiation, we gotta pick up the loss.
Just because it's always been that way doesn't mean it has to be that way.
And we do have a new contract, too.
We could talk about that in the contract.
Yeah, I think we should talk about it.
See, if we're the beneficiary, we ought to have more input.
So, I'll give you an example. The Convention Center here in Salem, for example, when that was built, the private side, you know, that built the restaurant and the hotel, they had a deal with the city of Salem where they had to pick up the first, whatever it was, a couple hundred thousand dollars in losses on that convention center. They also had the contract to run it, so they had an incentive.
To minimize that loss.
To minimize that loss, because they were gonna have to write it. Well, they've made that convention center very profitable. We're in a reverse situation on our contract. We gotta pick up the losses, and we have no control over it.
Right, exactly.
That's the way I interpret it, and I'm not an attorney who does contracts, but anyways, we're talking a lot about solid waste. But anyways, we're talking a lot about solid waste.
Well, that's because that's where I was last night.
Thank you. Yeah. You were out and about. You were over in, was that Mount Angel? Was that, or Silverton Awards? Was that this week?
Saturday, yeah. Goring Garden got their Business of the Year and nice presentation. Pretty well-attended event, 200-plus, I would think, and a nice meal. Yeah.
Yeah, I was at the Breakfast with the Chief here in Salem this morning. Walt was there, Sheriff Myers was there, and it was overflowing in the West Salem Roths Building, so that's really good to see a lot of support for that. Yeah, a lot of things going on. We've been really busy. With that, we've probably got lots of things to do, so why don't we adjourn for the day, and we'll be back next week.